Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council meeting of August 21st. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that you all rise for the singing of our national anthem.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise. The true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you to our very own Tenille Towns for the singing of our national anthem and to the National Film Board for the images of our country. I'd like to now move on to our land acknowledgement. The city respectfully acknowledges the Beaver, Cree, Dene, and Métis people as the original caretakers of these lands and surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work, and play and treaty, uh, treatyate territory within Turtle Island and acknowledge these lands have been home to diverse and sovereign First Nations and Inuit nations since time immemorial. Moving on to the adoption of the previous council minutes, I recognize councillor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move that council adopt the minutes of the city council meeting held July 24th, 2023 as presented.
Perfect, that motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue with errors or omissions, I'll call the question. Councillor Tuohle, how do you vote? Councillor Bosch, in favor?
In favor.
And that carries unanimously. Moving on to the adoption of today's agenda, councillor Blackmore.
I would move that council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you for that, and that motion is in order. I'll call the question.
Rexi, in favor?
That carries unanimously. There are no delegations that have let us know ahead of time they are coming today. Moving on to reports, there is a proclamation. Just, uh, the resolution is in your package, uh, in English and in French. And, um, just looking for a motion to support Rail Safety Week, um, from 2018, September 18th to September 24th, um, 2023. Councillor Teason.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I'd move that council support National Rail Safety Week to be held from September 18th to 2024, 2023. Sorry, I got a bit ahead of my twenties there. Uh, yeah, happy to, uh, be one of the members of council to support this proclamation. Considering that the rail does run east and west and north and south through our cities, it's important that, uh, we're all being a little extra precautious as we mirror those tracks.
Perfect, thanks for that. I'll take the motion and then I'll, um, call the question and then I'll read the proclamation. So, call the question. So, we're a little bit early on this one, but we'll read it today. Is it on, it's on council's agenda, um, in support of Rail Safety Week. Whereas Rail Safety Week is to be held across Canada from September 18th to 24th, 2023. And whereas 232 rail crossings and trespassing incidents occurred in Canada in 2022, resulting in 66 avoidable fatalities and 43 avoidable serious injuries. Whereas educating and informing the public about rail safety, reminding the public that rail right of ways are private property, enhancing public awareness of the dangers associated with rail, highway rail grade crossings, ensuring pedestrians and motorists are looking and listening well near railways, and obeying established traffic laws will reduce the number of avoidable fatalities and injuries caused by incidents involving trains and citizens. And whereas Operation Lifesaver is a public-private partnership whose aim is to work with the public, rail industry, governments, public services, media, and others to raise all rail safety awareness. And whereas CN has requested, City of Grand Prairie adopt this resolution in front of ongoing efforts to raise awareness, save lives, and prevent injuries in communities including our own municipality. It is hereby now resolved to support National Rail Safety Week to be held from September 18th to 24th. Thank you for that. Moving on to today's committee business, starting with the Financial Administration Services Committee meeting first. I would go to councillor Blackmore for introduction.
I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Financial and Administrative Services Committee meeting held August 15th, 2023 as presented.
Perfect, thank you for that. That motion is in order. Seeing no one else in the queue, I will call the question.
Councillor Berg, in favor?
Councillor Teason, in favor?
It hasn't popped up for anybody. Just give us.
It hasn't popped up yet? Okay.
Oh, I didn't want to foreshadow my vote, sorry.
All right, we'll go around. Councillor Plot.
In favor?
Councillor Bressi.
Favor.
O'Toole.
In favor.
Bosch.
In favor.
Teason. Blackmore.
In favor.
O'Connor.
In favor.
Berg.
In favor.
Mayor Clayton's in favor. So, that ma, uh, motion carries unanimously. And councillor Blackmore, you had one item of business. And I also understand that our CFO may have, um, some feedback in regards to some questions that were at Asset Committee. So, if, rather than going to your item of business, I'll go to CFO first to address some of the questions, if you're okay with that.
Oh, I was gonna introduce her, really.
Oh, perfect, okay, go for it.
That's fine. Ms. Whiteway.
Thank you, councillor Blackmore. Um, so I just wanted to take a few moments to address some of the questions that, uh, we had advised council we come back and answer from, uh, committee on Tuesday. So, there's four items I'd just like to address. Uh, franchise fees was the first one. So, there was a comment question made regarding the, um, franchise being, franchise fee revenue being behind that of last year. Um, yes, uh, we are looking at about 200,000 short from where we were the same time last year. Uh, we do collect franchise fees from Atco Gas, Atco Electric, and Aqua Terra. Uh, so depending on consumption and price, our revenues will fluctuate, uh, along with theirs. We do work closely with Atco, uh, for both gas and electric, and Aqua Terra as well for, um, those fees. And we have been advised that they are, Atco, pardon me, is forecasting a bit of a shortfall on the revenue side. We match accordingly with our franchise fee estimates, so we are expecting a little bit less this year. On interest and investment earnings, um, so there was, uh, comments, questions made regarding, uh, that income line being less than last year. Uh, this is correct. We are expecting less, um, revenue than we, we did get last year. Unfortunately, uh, there was a interest accrual miscalculation from our portfolio managers last year, which did result in too much revenue that was, um, corrected and addressed during, um, our audit. But, as with that said, that is going to have this year appear a lot lower. Additionally, a lot of our bonds are held longer term, so interest rates have increased just over the last couple of years. A lot of our bonds are older than that, and so would therefore have some of the lower interest rates. Selling a bond before maturity can result in an accounting loss, so we tend to not do that unless our cash flows absolutely require us to sell a bond prematurely. Otherwise, we do time our bonds to cash, to be available for cash as we need them in our planning. Public Security Unit was another question, and, um, why it wasn't included in the capital projects listing. We are running this through our operations, so the Public Security Unit extension from April till December of this year was approved by council through funding from reserves. And we've been, um, monitoring that via the operating budget with the reserve revenue covering the expenditures. And finally, there was, um, questions regarding overtime, uh, how it is budgeted and why it is where it is. So, all overtime, but, is budgeted at the department level. So, we do ensure that each department is monitoring and budgeting what they require for overtime. It is then included in our overall salaries and benefits line for the city. The city incurs overtime in multiple scenarios. So, some examples are when facilities are open statutory holidays, employees are required to have overtime. If we have emergency calls out for service after hours. Um, so that could be things like traffic signals not working properly, or there was an environmental spill that needed attention. There's many factors that have employees going out outside of their regular work hours. Uh, additionally, you know, there's sick time that need, may need to be covered last minute. So, those are the types of scenarios that we expect to see for overtime. Our overtime approximates about 2% of our total salary. So, when we do have that budget line of, uh, about 1.6 million, um, that's, that's where that comes from. Um, as of today, or sorry, as of June 30th, the higher-than-usual number is resulting from actual overtime incurred as a result of G-Prep, um, activations and our responses. So, yes, we will incur those expenses, but we do anticipate to get revenue back for that so that it isn't, um, tax-funded at the end of the day. But it is, yes, showing our forecast to be, um, a bit different than, uh, than other years. And, um, I believe that addresses the questions from committee. Thank you.
I had a question, and I see councillor Bressi also has a question.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Uh, my question's about the overtime costs for G-Prep. I want to make sure I understand how reimbursement works. So, I remember the province changed a while ago that they only reimbursed 90% instead of 100%. But do we get 100% back from the municipalities that we serve through G-Prep, or will we only get 90% back?
Ms. Whiteway.
Uh, thank you for the question, councillor Bressi. Um, so my understanding is we will, um, invoice the communities involved and, um, be able to get 100% back. Now, whether that municipality bills the province and only receives 90%, that may be where that difference comes in, but we should be, um, receiving all of our overtime related to the Dunes, uh, fire back to us.
Excellent, thank you.
And my question is in the same vein. I'm wondering if we had, um, have we sent a formal request to the County of Grand Prairie in regards to the reimbursement? From the, from the Dunes West Fire?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Clayton. At this time, no, I've not, um, we've not completed that, but we will advise council when that time comes.
Okay, thanks. Councillor Bosch?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Uh, just in that same questioning, do we know the percentage of allotted time for the Dunes, uh, G-Prep service within that overtime bucket? Is it half of that overtime, 70%?
Ms. Whiteway.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Bosch, the dollars I know, uh, for overtime was 433,000 for that event. Um, so that would be in your year-to-date totals.
So, that would come off that overtime, uh, listing?
Yeah, that's correct.
433, thank you.
Just curious on the accounting procedure. Would that go into general revenue, um, or how do, how do you, strategic, accounting-wise, how do you actually portray that revenue?
Uh, thank you for the question, Mayor Clayton. Uh, so we would always, um, still record the expenditure as it is. That way, we can always be able to know and report on what our overtime is or these extenuating circumstances. Then we would put it into general revenue, the offset.
Perfect, thank you. Councillor Berg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. We've talked about overtime. Are we also reimbursed for regular hours that our staff commit?
Ms. Whiteway.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Great question. You're absolutely, if we, um, are paying a normal salary and they're not here serving, um, for the city, but rather that, yes, we will be billing for those hours as well.
Thank you, Ms. Whiteway.
All right, I see no one else in the queue, so I'll go back to councillor Blackmore.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council receive the unaudited financial statements and supporting information for the period ending June 30th, 2023 for information.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. Comments or questions on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. That comes, uh, that's carried unanimously. Uh, highlights from your meeting, councillor Blackmore.
Uh, yes, thank you. Reminder letters to residents, uh, with outstanding balances, uh, for taxes that the next penalty that will be applied is September 1st. So, if you, if you meet, if you beat that date of September 1st, you won't be assessed that next penalty. Um, assessors are working on collecting rental expenses and revenue information from property owners, um, which is valuable information when we go to other levels of government for, uh, requests for funding. Budget process for the upcoming fiscal year is well underway, and we, council can expect that, um, CLT will review internally by the end of August, so, uh, definitely well in hand. And in procurement, admin continues to work with all departments on competitive bid requests and capital projects for 2023. Additionally, procurement is developing a supplier performance process to be piloted in September, which I know council will be interested in hearing because we've, uh, often asked about how well our suppliers are performing and how we can measure that. So, I look forward to that for sure, um, and that's everything.
All right, thanks for that update, councillor Blackmore. Moving on to the Invest GP Committee meeting of, held on August 15th, and I will turn it over to councillor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'd just like to move that council adopt the minutes of the Invest GP Committee held August 15th, 2023 as presented.
Great, thanks for that. That motion is in order. I'll call the question on receiving those minutes. And that carries unanimously. It's a fairly light gen, uh, meeting, but to councillor Plot, did you have any highlights?
Uh, yeah, we had an update from, uh, Chief McEckern. Um, just again, giving us an idea of, uh, small businesses that continue to open our community between June 21st and August 6th. We had 35 more businesses open. 15 of those were home-based and 20 were commercial. So, it's great to see that continues to happen. We also had, uh, two barrier-free grant applications in a review. Um, and the addition, we also had a conversation border renew a stream, the success we've been having with that. Um, for Invans Entertainment, uh, Bryan Adams has opened up 200 additional seats for the show, and Jeff Dunham has been announced for the Bonnet Center on November 29th as well. So, lots of events coming up there.
Thanks for that, councillor Plot. Moving on to the Operational Services Committee meeting held on October 15th, sorry, August 15th. I'll look to councillor Bosch for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I move that council adopt the minutes of the Operational Services Committee meeting held August 15th, 2023 as presented.
Great, thank you for that. That motion is in order. I'll call the question.
Bressi, in favor?
What's missing?
Oh.
That carries unanimously. Councillor Bosch, you had an item of business.
We do. We have, uh, a bylaw, um, to give a, three readings to a traffic bylaw, and I think we'll have, uh, Chief Glavin speak to it in case anybody has any further questions to our presentation at committee.
Chief Glavin?
Sure, thanks councillor Bosch. Uh, so what we have presented at committee was a recommendation that council add an additional truck route, which is on 68th Avenue, uh, from 92nd Street to the county border. This would correspond with the county also having that as a full truck route, uh, with no weight restrictions. It's something that would be good for industry and would also allow some of the heavy truck traffic to, uh, uh, get off of Resources Road earlier and would be more efficient for all involved.
Thank you for that. Councillor Bosch?
I move that council give first reading to bylaw C-116J, being an amendment to the traffic bylaw.
So, this is a motion to give first reading, no discussion or debate. I will call the question. And that carries unanimously. Councillor Bosch?
Thank you. I move that council give second reading to bylaw C-116J.
That motion is in order, an opportunity for discussion or debate, and I recognize councillor Blackmore.
Uh, my question doesn't affect the way I'll vote for the motion because I do completely support this change. I think it'll be good for us, but I'm wondering if that will affect, uh, the truck route at all on 92nd Street, particularly north of 100th Avenue?
Councillor, Chief Glavin, sorry?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. No, I think what you, you may see potentially a little less traffic use that road, but I don't think it will dramatically impact anything on.
Will still leave it as a truck route?
That's correct. We still need to get trucks down there, uh, for the transload facility.
Yeah, that's why I said north of 100th Avenue. But it's fine.
Yeah, we're not proposing anything right now. And by having that part, uh, as part of it, it just makes it very clear that that is the specified route that we want them to take, so we keep trucks off of 100th.
Okay, good, thank you.
Councillor Teason.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Uh, yeah, this probably won't affect how I vote, but I, I think it's a, just a question from the report that I had. Um, in regards to our stakeholder engagement, so we're making this. So we're making this road to the 75% axle limit that the county would have on the adjacent road that we'd be adjoining to. In our stakeholder engagement, it mentions we've talked to all city departments and stuff like that. Have we also talked to the county? The only reason I ask is it wasn't mentioned in the report, just to ensure enlivenes of the road and that they're ready for us.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So yes, we have spoken to the county. The county also changed their bylaw for truck routes, and they took the 75% axle weight off of that road, so we can have full axle weight coming out of the city onto the county roads without any negative issues that we would be putting onto the county. So to answer your question, yes, we have spoken to the county, and the county has also passed a bylaw that aligns.
Okay, so we're not going to build it to the old standard, but to the new standard, as the county said, with full axle, not 75% axle?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So our road is currently built to withstand full axle weight on our road, so we don't need to change anything on our construction on the city side, and it sounds the county doesn't need to do anything on their side.
Awesome. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, I'll call the question on second reading. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Bosch?
Sorry about that. Got some brackets here and numbers going on. I move that counsel have third reading of bylaw C-116J at this meeting.
All right. That motion is in order. It's a motion to be able to have third reading here today on bylaw C-1166J. This must pass unanimously in order for us to have third reading here today. I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Bosch?
Thank you. And finally, I move that counsel give third reading to bylaw C-1166J, being the amendment to the traffic bylaw.
Thank you for that. So a motion to have third reading. I'll call the question. Sorry to give third reading. Call the question. And that carries unanimously. Thank you for that, Counsel Bosch. Any highlights from your meeting?
You would think there'd be a ton with all the construction going on, but I think we're just settling into just accepting that construction till, you know, September, October. In energy and environment, the first project of the Clean Energy Improvement Program is now complete, and there is 30 more projects in the queue. In transit, late-night service was implemented July 29th, and it's all going well. Happy to see that. And then we are getting prepared for the launch of the youth fairs on September 5th. In parks, opinions for, or options for the covered outdoor structure are to come to council here soon and be brought back to committee for hopefully some fabulous ideas for an outdoor skating facility. And that's all I have.
Perfect. Thanks for that, Counselor Bosch. Moving on to the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting held August 15th, and I'll turn it over to Counsel Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that counsel adopt the minutes of the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting held August 15th, 2023, as presented.
All right. Thanks for that. That motion is in order. I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting, Counsel Berg?
Yes, just let me pull that up. It's not wanting to pull up. There we go. Over, Chief Lemieux gave us a service area update. Major projects, number of inspections have been successfully completed for the Coordinated Care Campus, and tenants were slated to move in late last week. Community social development, client assessments in the home support program increased in Q1 from 19 to 39 this year. Housing and homelessness, administration is working with several departments on application for the Housing Accelerator Fund to be submitted this week. Enforcement services, officers have been actively engaged with investigations of unsightly properties throughout the city, the goal to obtain compliance from owners on these sites and have them cleaned up before the issue gets worse. Emergency management, G-Prep has now been activated in response to evacuations in the Northwest Territories. At that point in time, the city was currently hosting over 700 people. Community knowledge campus, Aquarian Regional Swim Meet was held August 11th to 13th with over 275 swimmers in attendance, and Peace River Cowboys' adult football team finished the year with a big win July 22nd and headed to playoffs in Calgary. And Northwest Polytechnic Wolves soccer team also starting their year on August 12th. Sports Development, Wellness and Culture, sponsorship or after-school drop-in allows community drop-in Saturdays, Sundays to be offered at no charge for the remaining of the 2023 season, and a bid has been submitted for the U-15, U-17, U-19 Canadian Wrestling Championships to be hosted at the Design Works Center. And if awarded, this event will bring in 600 athletes, coaches, and dignitaries plus family members. We discussed charitable drop-offs at city facilities, and we all agree that there's a number of amazing organizations throughout the city that are doing an admirable job, and there is no need for the city to get involved other than through supports. Grand Prairie Curling Center feasibility study, we did, heard a presentation on some costs to retrofit some of the facilities within the Curling Center so that it may be used for other events, but to date, we haven't crossed that bridge yet, so hopefully in the near future, we can explore that a little bit deeper on what might be viable in that space in non-curling seasons. And that is some of the highlights.
Thanks for that, Counsel Berg. Moving on to the Strategy and Communication Services Committee meeting held August 15th, I'll turn it over to Counsel Berg again.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move that counsel adopt the minutes of the Strategy and Communication Services Committee meeting held August 15th, 2023, as presented.
All right. That motion is in order. I'll call the question. Counsel Bressi, how do you vote?
In favor.
That carries unanimously. One item of business from your committee, Counsel Berg?
Yes, I would like to move that counsel receive the City of Grand Prairie Strategic Plan 2022 to 2025 Q2023 Status Report for information. Just speaking to this, this was something that counsel had asked for a while back, and what it does is we have a number of strategic priorities and strategic plans. There's a lot of things on the move involving numerous departments and a lot of people, so what this does for us is it lets us actively see the progression of each item on our strategic plan and priority and how they're moving along and what's active and, basically, a nice little report card of things, and I think we'll be seeing these each quarter.
All right. Thanks for that, Counsel Berg. Moving on to, I apologize. I'll call the question on the motion to receive the strategic plan. Oh, I apologize. Counsel Thiessen and Counsel Blackmore in the queue. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Just a question in regards to our strategic priorities, like report card, I guess. On page 11 and 12, talking about our top priorities in your package, it would be page 79 and 80 out of 106. So we have a checkbox of all the things that we are doing there. Some of them, it seems like we may be at the end of that, so like under top priorities, 2022 next, it says review and assess the current state of policing in the community. I think, I think we've done that, and we made a decision, and now it's time to fulfill that. So my question is, is this, the top priorities that are presented here, are these just meant to reflect what we made in 2022, or are we keeping these two pages updated so that the community and ourselves can have like a visual checklist of the things we said we were going to do and what we have actually done?
Chief McEckern? If you could answer those questions?
Thank you. Sorry, thank you through the chair. I hope I understand your question. This is basically an ongoing checklist of, yes, what we set out to do in 2022, as well as amendments and the status of going forward. So we did have a discussion about when to consider it complete and remove it from the list. I think that's what you're, what you're asking for. But to reflect what we had agreed to engage to in, in the beginning, we decided to keep them on the list for the time being.
Actually, yeah, I think part of my confusion was, was it said top priorities, 2022, colon, now, and we're kind of in 2023 now, so that's kind of, for me, that, that says then. And so I just want to make sure that this is as up-to-date as possible, and I think when it comes to our strategic plan, I take great pride as a counselor and that our administration and us working together as a team, that we're completing things. I like to be able to illustrate that to the community, and I think that's part of what this tool is all about. So yeah, so I don't, I don't know, maybe it's just my confusion, but I just found that when we're speaking of last year and then we put now too, it all, it creates that, and then in the next one, top priorities, 2022 next, that was a bit of a confusion as well because we are, we're in that next, so I don't know if it was just a date typo or whatever.
Thank you. Through the, through the chair, I'd like to follow up with you on this. I'm not seeing exactly what you're seeing. Our numbers are different in our packet, in the package I have, so.
Okay, yeah, no. Love to do that. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm, once we approve this for information tonight, it will be publicly available on the website where we list our strategic direction. That is correct. So people who are interested can go and look on the site and see where we are in the completion.
Yes, through the chair, you are correct. It goes on to the website, the updated one will go on to the website pretty much immediately.
Good. Thank you. And, and I, and I don't want to see us removing things from the list. If they're completed, they should be, I think they get a check mark already if they're completed, and they should just stay there until we do another, another plan.
Counsel O'Toole?
Yeah, I was just going to mention, I don't want to see things removed from the list because it shows what we have accomplished in this term, and, but I didn't get my finger on the button fast enough to take my finger off, so thank you.
All right. Thanks, Counsel O'Toole. I'll now call the question on the motion that's on the floor to receive the, for information.
Bressi in favor?
Carries unanimously. All right, moving on, Counsel Berg, any highlights from your meeting?
Yeah, Chief McEckern gave us a number of updates. City Clerk, the annual records of destruction was completed at the end of July with 14,000 pounds of paper destroyed. And also, there was an update to the delegate request form. It's been updated to enhance the process. Corporate communications, members of the communication team are currently supporting the Reception Center for evacuees from the Northwest Territories. Intergovernmental affairs, the Housing Accelerator Fund application will be submitted. Visits to the city were arranged with Ministers Nixon, Williams, and Turtin, and administration attended Treaty Day at Duncan's First Nation, excuse me, and made connections with the BAN's administration. In HR, administration completed a Workplace Safety Index for mental health through Telus Health. Corporate marketing, work continues on a strategy tagline and visual identity for the corporate brand refresh and strategy. Sales and sponsorship strategy plan is 90% complete. Work is underway in the final stages of Salesforce launch and sales package development, and the naming rights to the Activity and Reception Center are now open for bids, and the Eastlake Field House will be published, and bids and tenders within the next few days. And we also went through relatively in-depth on the strategic plan package that we had just reviewed in the past. And that is some of the highlights from Strategy and Communication.
Great. Thanks, Counsel Berg. Moving on to correspondence, as you will see, counsel, there is one item of correspondence today in your package, a letter from Reeve Marshall in regards to, a letter that was, I was directed by counsel to write in regards to accessing 116th Street from Range Road 68 between 68 Avenue and Township Road 710, which is the correction line. We had asked for temporary access to help alleviate construction congestion during our current construction season. As you'll see, Reeve Marshall has sent a reply on behalf of his counsel, indicating that there would be further improvements to adjacent county infrastructure and substantial consultation with property owners, and therefore, at this time, they were unable to meet our requests. I do, I will open it up for conversation or questions before we take a motion to receive this correspondence for information. Counsel O'Connor?
I'll do the business when you're ready.
Okay. So anyone with questions? Counsel Blackmore?
It's not a question, just a comment that last paragraph of the letter does ask us to extend the truck route on 68th Avenue, which we did tonight. We are so quick.
Yeah. Yeah, so I see no notes with questions. I do, I did have a question for Chief Glavine in regards to this. We've opened the east end of 68th, and to my knowledge, opening 68 from, from 108th to 116th is not a possibility as that road between, between Wapiti Road and 116th is not built for capacity for truck traffic, correct?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yes, it's not built for the, the loads that we'd be asked to put on it, and also just, it would need some other improvements geometrically.
And at this point, I know that administration from both the county and the city have had conversations. To your knowledge, from 68 South to the correction line currently has capacity for truck traffic, correct?
To my knowledge, yes, although they have suggested it needs some upgrades, but it is currently the over-dimensional route for the province, so many large loads already have to use that road.
And so if I recall, last time we had a conversation on this, administration was going to go away and have further conversations on that, has that happened to date, do you know?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yes, we've had some conversations. I believe the, there was to be some materials brought back to the next ICC meeting.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Counsel O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move that counsel receive this correspondence for information.
Thank you. That motion is in order. I will call the question. There's no delegation business today, no notices of motion. We will now have our recess, and we'll be back at 6:00 PM. See you then. We will now have our recess, and we'll be back at 6:00 PM. See you then.
Good evening and welcome back to the City Council meeting of August 21st. We are now in the evening session and we have a few items of business tonight. There is one item of unfinished business and there's a motion in council's package there for it. I'm happy to have a discussion. I see Councilor Blackmore on the queue and then I had a question for administration.
Mayor Clayton, I was simply going to say perhaps we want to table this motion until the time when the information we're waiting for becomes available.
Perfect. So putting a specific date to it. Perfect. Let me ask my question to administration and then maybe your motion will come out of that. A question for Chief McCracken. Following our conversation with Minister Williams and Minister Nixon, I know that you and I and some of our colleagues discussed about opportunity in provincial funding in regards to the last request to complete the small pieces of business that are still required at the Coordinated Care Campus and I'm wondering if you've received an update from the province in regards to the opportunity for provincial funding?
Thank you. Yes, Mayor. I was in contact with someone from the provincial government who advised me that the best course of action for us is to apply through the Affordable Housing Program, which we're just waiting to complete that application and present that to the province.
Perfect. So I guess my next question for Chief Lemieux. Assuming that this application gets in in a timely fashion, to your knowledge, is there any concerns with council tabling this decision at this point in regards to the work that's still to be completed?
I'm going to say that there is some risk because certainly some of our contractors are watching to see whether funding will be approved to continue this project. So I think there is some risk in not securing funding to move forward. So it depends how long we're going to delay this, but I wouldn't want to delay this for very long.
So if I recall from the Standing Committee discussion, there were certain items that were immediate and other items that if I understand correctly, administration indicated wouldn't impact the operations. And so would it be your preference or Mr. Miller's preference for us to send this back to the appropriate Standing Committee for council? back to the appropriate Standing Committee for council to have a discussion on those buckets of money specifically? What would you prefer, Mr. Miller?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Well, the next committee is next week, so we could probably send it back to committee. We'd have the additional information, but I think there is some pressure that we do need a decision on the funding. We could, I guess, differentiate what could be delayed, but we are hopeful to keep moving forward with the project to completion, so it'll be another week. And then if there was a decision made at committee and then it's referred to the September 5th council meeting for a...
Is that appropriate timing? So I mean, Standing Committee can't make that decision, but, okay.
No, I think two weeks is fine, but beyond that could be a problem for us.
Okay, so then, Mr. Miller, would you, I don't know if you need a motion, council has an expectation that we'll look for support from the province. So as Chief McEckern indicated, that application's already been in process. If the motion today is to refer this back to the appropriate Standing Committee, we should be good?
Oh, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I think that'll work for us. And then we can find out what the application deadline is as well, and we'll have that information.
Chief McEckern, anything to add?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing to add is the application period is now open and closes October 16th. So it'd depend on when we submitted it and how long it takes the province to make a decision.
Okay. I know that Council Bosch also had a question, and then I'll go to Council Blackmore for business arising.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. That was, I guess, my, my question is, this application that we sent in, if we know a timeline from once the grant closes or applications close? Is it typically a month? Is it six months? Do we know?
Through the, Mayor, I would, I don't have any indication on how long it would be with this program. Perhaps Chief Lemieux might have a better idea, but I'm...
Chief Lemieux?
I'm sorry, I don't have those dates, so I don't know what the timeline is, but it's usually not a fast process.
Okay, so if we can bring that information back to the appropriate Standing Committee, assuming that the motion that Council Blackmore puts forward is approved to send it back to Standing Committee, maybe those questions can be answered at that time. Mr. Miller?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. No wonder if we could just ask Chief White to chime in on the timing and if she has concerns on the budgetary pressures.
Sorry, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I suppose we, the two weeks would be sort of like City Manager, Mr. Miller, said, kind of our absolute last date. My concern would be with October being maybe the closing date, if there is no announcements prior to October, that we're still at a standstill prior to then. One option that could be considered is that it is approved via reserves with, or the grant. So if the grant is awarded to the city, then obviously administration would choose not to use reserves but would fund with the grant. So that could be an alternative as well to meet some timing risks.
Yeah, and I think that's appropriate, given the conversation at Standing Committee. I just recall some of the conversation was that there may not be interest in funding all of the recommended projects at the Coordinated Care Campus. So I think if we go to the appropriate Standing Committee, have a discussion, at that time we can gauge council's interest in whether it was one of the buckets, both of the buckets, whatever that work was required. And that gives us time for our application to continue to be in. And if council at that time chooses to fund all of it, it can be through various funding sources as recommended. Okay, Council Blackmore?
I would refer item, whatever item number this is.
14.1.
14.1 to the appropriate Standing Committee's of next week.
Right, so that motion is in order. I see no one else in the queue. I'll call the question. Council Bressi, how do you vote?
Council Bressi opposed.
And that carries eight to one. Moving on to public hearings, there are two public hearings tonight. I'm just gonna get it loaded here. I will call this public hearing to order and look to Ms., Chief McEckern for introduction and before, well, Mr. Babalola, oh, I apologize, Mr. Johnson, I didn't see you there. So if you'd like to introduce them, Chief McEckern, feel free. Otherwise, gentlemen, welcome, and I will look to an introduction for administration, by administration.
Thank you, Mayor. I will turn this over to Mr. Johnson for introductions.
Thank you, and I will turn it over to Mr. Babalola.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. The bylaw before us today is the bylaw C-1329A and bylaw C-1466A. Bylaw C-1329A being the amendment to West Industrial Area Structure Plan and bylaw C-1466A, an amendment to the Urban Rail Business Park. Administration has initiated this amendment to correct a roadway naming error in the West Industrial Area Structure Plan and the Urban Rail Business Park outline plan. Okay, so the West Industrial Area Structure Plan is the one demarcated by the red border and the Urban Rail Business Park is within the ASP and it is outlined in blue here. So the West Industrial Area Plan is bounded to the north by the Grand Prairie Airport, which is the northwest ASP and the West Gate ASP. It is bounded to the east by the Richmond Industrial Park and the south, and to the south by the Ketchikanian Area Structure Plan. As shown here on the map, the Urban Rail Business Park is within the outline plan. I mean, the Urban Rail Business Park outline plan is within the West Industrial Area Structure Plan. And the subject road that we want to rename today is the one that is demarcated in purple. Okay, so why are we renaming this? In the, in naming the roadways, the address authority uses the planning grid to determine the roadway number, and that is by what street and what avenue number the road will be assigned. So as shown here, the, the purple lines represent the planning grid and so as, that's these purple lines, okay. Roadway 94 Avenue is, it has the correct name as it is very close to the 94 Avenue on the planning grid. And according to the planning grid, 91 Avenue that we have named on the, in the outline plan would have been correct. However, the crossroad between it on the east side of the 116th Street is 95 Avenue. So when you're coming on 95 Avenue and you cross 116th Street, if this name is not changed, you go directly on 91 Avenue. This will create confusion for road users. Also, our road naming policy, give me a moment, please. Okay, so our road naming policy requires that when we name this road, the numbers increase from south to, to north. And within the outline plan, when we have 91 Avenue here and 94 above, that will not comply with what we have in the outline plan. So this is one of the reasons why we are changing this, or requesting that this should be changed. So the ASP identifies the road, like, yeah, the ASP identifies the road as 95 Avenue and in the OP, it identifies it as, in the OP, it identifies as 91 Avenue. And the same road, when it continues and gets here, the ASP identifies it as 95 Avenue, which is creating confusion, having a continuous road having two names. The amendment is therefore proposed to rectify the inconsistency and prevent potential confusion for the road users. For this reason, administration recommends that the road will be renamed as Railway Avenue in the ASP and the outline plan. Railway Avenue, we run east-west, connecting 1 to 4th Street, which is the arterial by the west side. It will connect it to 116th Street, as shown in the purple, as shown in purple on this map. Renaming the road as Railway Avenue complies with the road naming policy requirements and it ensures consistency in the road name and eliminates confusion for the road users. Administration therefore recommends that council give three readings to bylaw C-139, 1329A, being an amendment to the West Industrial ASP, and also give three readings to bylaw C-1466A, being an amendment to the Urban Rail Business Park outline plan. Thank you.
That opportunity for questions for administration, Council Bosch?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Can we go back to the map for a moment?
Yes, sure.
Thank you. So I agree with you, I think it is confusing. What happens to 95th Avenue? Does it continue anywhere else or, because it should be north of 94th now, right? So what happens to that, that naming of 95th Avenue? Does it change to a different street?
These arterial also serves as the border between the city and the County of GP. So on their own side, it's 95 Avenue as well.
So their side will continue to be 95?
Yes.
But not our side?
Well, on our side, if this bylaw goes through, it will be Railway Avenue.
So will you not have the same confusion when people are traveling, I guess not through our intersection within the city, but as soon as they cross borders? Will you still have the same issue?
Through the mail, that would not be a confusion because we are not, it's now a different municipality and we can name it another name, but if we name it, say, 91 or 92 Avenue and it's different from that, that could lead to confusion. And our policy says that we can change the road name at intersections of an accessory.
But Google will say what?
It would be fine with Google, it's whatever we have that Google will pick eventually.
Okay.
All right, I don't see any further, councilors in the queue? Oh, Council Teason?
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. If there are no further questions, I can do business.
Just give us a minute.
You bet.
Okay, so moving on to the presentation and submission, I will ask if there's anyone here to speak in support of this bylaw change, sorry, this bylaw and bylaw amendment. I will ask a second time if you're here to speak in support of this bylaw and the bylaw amendment, please come forward. And to my knowledge, I'll just double check, there's no one online. So I'll ask a third time if there's anyone here to speak in support of this bylaw and bylaw amendment. Seeing none, I'll ask to see if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to this bylaw and bylaw amendment. And a second time, recognizing that there's no one online, see if there's anyone here to speak in opposition. And a third time to see if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to bylaw amendment C-1392A and amendment bylaw C-1466A. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and recognize Council Teason for business arising.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Thanks to our administration for the presentation. Mr. Babalola, I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1392A, being an amendment to the West Industrial Area Structure Plan.
That motion is in order. There is no discussion or debate in first reading, so I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Council Teason?
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I'd move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1329A. Speaking to this motion, I think Mr. Babalola explained it fairly well. It's just to create an area where we're not creating confusion amongst our own residents or on Google. I think once this change is made, it'll just simply become Railway Avenue. And as people drive through, Google will transition them through Railway Avenue and ask them to continue on 95th, like, usually pretty good at if they're programmed in. So I think this is an appropriate change. I'm not a big fan of names on avenues and streets. I like the numbers, but here it works, so I think we should all support this.
All right. Seeing no one in the queue with discussion or debate, I'll call the question on second reading. And that's carried unanimously. Council Teason?
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I'd move that we have third reading for bylaw C-1329A at this meeting.
And that motion is in order. It must pass unanimously in order for us to have third reading here tonight. I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Council Teason?
All right, I'd move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1329A.
Perfect. Seeing no one in the queue, I will call the question. That too carries unanimously. Council Teason, would you like to continue?
Might as well, got an eight-step program here, so I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1466A, being an amendment to the Urban Rail Business Park outline plan.
That motion is in order, seeing there's no discussion or debate in first reading. I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Council Teason?
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I'd move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1466A. I'd speak to this motion, I think I largely did. This is just clearing it up between the plans and I hope to get the same unanimous support. Thank you.
Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question, a second reading of bylaw C-1466A. That carries unanimously. Council Teason?
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I'd move that we have third reading of bylaw C-1466A at this meeting.
Thank you so much. As with other ones, this must pass unanimously in order for us to have third reading here tonight. Call the question. That carries unanimously. Council Teason?
All right, to finish this off, I'd move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1466A, an amendment to the Urban Rail Business Park outline plan.
That motion is in order. I'll call the question. Please vote. And that too carries unanimously. Moving on to item 15.2, land, my apologies. Sure, we will just take a very brief pause, wait for Council Blackmore to come back to the chambers so we can do our next land use public hearing. All right, moving on to item 15.2, land use bylaw amendment, rezoning from RC Combined Residential, RG General Residential and RM Medium Density Residential to Urban Reserve, bylaw C-1260-174. And welcome, Ms. Downing. Turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Administration has received an application to amend the land use bylaw to redesignate 14.6 hectares of land from Combined Residential, General Residential, Medium Density Residential to Urban Reserve. The subject properties are in the Royal Oaks neighborhood, south of 132nd Avenue and east of 108th, sorry, yeah. They consist of 14.6 hectares of undeveloped land and not, and it is not subdivided or serviced. The properties are primarily surrounded by residential properties, as you can see. The Royal Oaks North outline plan was adopted in 2007. The outline includes details about the future land use, the transportation plan, the tentative subdivision and the municipal reserve dedication for schools and parks. Future development of the sites will be required to align with that outline plan, as shown here. The application seeks a rezoning to UR with the intention of utilizing the properties for extensive agricultural purposes. This is in a means to control weeds. The application was circulated to internal and external agencies, advertised on the city's website, signs were posted on the property and letters were mailed to all of the adjacent properties. Administration did receive one call from a resident that was... a resident that was concerned about chemical use on the property, and administration confirmed to that resident that the city does not restrict the use of chemicals adjacent to residential properties. However, adherence to the manufacturer's specifications is required when using chemicals. Administration recommends that council give three readings to bylaw C-1260-174. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I will now go to the presentation and submission portion. I apologize. I'll go to council for an opportunity with questions for administration, recognizing councillor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I have a couple of questions. One is, first of all, I think that this is a good opportunity because it's the best way to mitigate the weed issue that is being struggled with in the Royal Oaks community. So it might, I have two questions, I guess. One is related to the farming. When would they be required to start farming the land in order for this designation to hold? Because I know you talk about that, and I kind of lost track of dates in there. And how would they move farm equipment through the city to these properties?
Ms. Downing?
Thank you, through the chair. They would not be required to start farming the land. It would be an option, given the zoning. So they may choose not to start farming the land. And when they choose to start farming the land, that would be up to them to make that decision. And moving, perhaps the applicant could speak more to the moving of the equipment, but we have evaluated the sites, and they don't need to move equipment over top of infrastructure, such as sidewalks or utilities.
So if they don't necessarily start farming the land, they're still required to mitigate the fox tail issue that we're having there?
Thank you, through the mayor. That's correct.
Okay. And a lot of that is future school sites, and so they're not included in this, are they?
Ms. Downing?
Thank you, through the mayor. No, that's correct. This future school site is not included in this.
Do we have a plan for the weed control on those sites?
Ms. Downing?
I'm not aware, but I would feel confident saying that our Parks Department has weed inspectors that would be dealing with the...
Chief Clavon?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. As Ms. Downing noted, we do have weed inspectors, and noxious weeds are already controlled on those sites.
Because fox tails haven't been identified as noxious weeds, correct? Okay. Councillor Blackmore.
And then my other, I guess, I don't know if it's a question really, but agriculture can use different chemicals than are allowed within city boundaries. So I don't know if that's going to start, be a conflict over time, should they choose to farm. I just know that urban chemicals are different than agricultural chemicals.
Thank you, through the mayor. I did raise this question with our Parks Department, and they advised me that the chemicals are the same, that would be allowed, and that it is up to the manufacturer labels as to how they can be used. So it's possible, I suppose, that the chemicals themselves have guidelines as to where they can be used, but the city itself doesn't regulate that.
Okay.
I ran out of questions. Okay. Any other questions for council, or for administration, rather? Councillor Bressi.
Great, thank you. I'm just looking at if these zones are urban reserve, I'm looking at some of the permitted uses would become a solar collector could be put there, extensive recreation could be put there, some discretionary uses are manufactured home, a carnifol, a commercial recreation facility outdoor. What kind of analysis has been done about the risk of those potential uses being built on this land in the future? I'm especially looking at the one that's completely surrounded on all four sides, right in the middle by a school and residential streets.
Ms. Downing?
Thank you, through the mayor. The discretionary uses, we would have the discretion to ensure that they don't have conflicts. As for the permitted use, administration didn't see that there was a huge risk to the applicant having the intention to have uses on the site that would be a conflict.
Councillor Berg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I guess for me, when I think of agriculture, I think of hay or different things like that, something quite straightforward. Has the topsoil been removed from this area, as is quite common in developments?
Thank you, through the mayor. I'm not able to speak to that. I think there's some testing of the soil that would need to be done. Perhaps the applicant would be in a better position to answer that question.
I just wanted to clarify, a question indicated in the report, it identifies a reduction in the amount of taxes. I'm just trying to, so I'm clear initially, currently the tax generation from that would be $28,400, and if this is approved, the city would receive less taxes, correct?
Thank you. That's correct.
Okay. All right. Seeing no further questions for administration, thank you for that. I'll now move to the presentation and submission portion of our public hearing, and ask if there's anyone here to speak in support of this application. I'll give you a minute to come on up. I think there's a couple of questions from a couple of councillors. And I'll let you go ahead and introduce yourselves, for those who are watching online, and then I'll offer an opportunity for questions after.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor Clayton, councillors. I'm Scott Rossler with Helix Engineering, and with me Scott Pravitz with Prudential Land, so representing the landowner. Just a little background, so this is, obviously it's been an active development for several years, starting in about 2007, and it's taken a bit of a hiatus since then, so, which is relatively typical of the development industry currently. So I think it's in the report, but 2007, I think the outline plan was approved, and there's been three or four phases done within the development. So the last phase, it was phase four, I think it was, it's been three or four years now since that's done. So since then, we've just been dealing with cost of not to control weeds and whatnot. And Prudential, I believe, we get some calls from residents as well around that. So this is just in response to try and control that. So the need to work the land and control some weeds does require the UR zoning. So we've been here before, talking about this same type of thing. So the understanding from our perspective is we would obviously proceed to farm in some way. And as to councillor Blackmore's question, right now, the intent is to start immediately, because it's a bit of a pain the way it is today. So the intention is to have a hay crop there. So again, as to councillor Berg's comment, there will be, that's the intention today. The zoning does allow for cereal crops and whatever else, and not as well. But hay is relatively easy to maintain, which is kind of the intent of this. It also chases weeds out. We can deal with weeds and whatnot through that seeding, and it'll kind of overtake it. And it's good for, you know, four, five, six years without having to go back in and do a lot of spraying and things like that. So it's actually, from a chemical perspective, probably the easiest crop to maintain within an urban setting. Also, Ms. Downing talked about equipment and whatnot, which they assessed as not a concern, but hay equipment is quite a bit smaller than heavy agricultural equipment. So that being said, I did, we got one phone call from a landowner, so we followed up with them, and it was mostly to do with chemicals. A few questions about development and whatnot. Most of them are quite happy to see it going to UR, because it means there's not an imminent development behind them. So we did get a little comments from that, but we do feel the chemical risk is very similar to what it is today. So possibly less with hay being the chosen crop. So I don't think I have anything more to add. If anybody has any questions, they're, we're happy to answer.
Councillor Bressi.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm just wondering, you say this is something you want to do immediately. What do you mean by immediately? Do you mean as in this fall or first thing in the spring? Trying to figure out what kind of time urgency there is.
Never is the right time to do it.
Yeah, we wouldn't see canola today, but hay definitely you could. Quite often, it's a grass seed, right? So moisture from the winter would help it. And it's, like I said, it's a years-long crop instead of, so, now that being said, if that didn't happen in the spring, I mean, in theory, it could be anything, but if they want to, they've expressed concern to get it done fairly quickly. So grass takes a little longer to grow. So, you know, it's very likely that it could happen this fall. And just, oh, I think there was one more question about topsoil as well. So that, most of the site still does have topsoil on it. There's one, the southwest piece, that's kind of right behind the church property, kind of tucked over in the corner right along 108th. That was stripped, but it's honestly been disc'd so many times since then, with a lot of organic growth on it, that it probably does have a fair bit of topsoil there now. So, you know, we don't expect any concerns with that. Should be able to roll right into farming, so.
Councillor Blackmore?
I'm curious, Mr. Rossler, when you say that you're going to start hay right away, because my understanding was the fields were sprayed for weeds already, which has really ended the growing season. And I would assume resulted in things blowing away and things falling over. So I, given my long ago history in farming, I'm not sure you can actually hay it right now, but...
We wouldn't hay the, what's there. We would just seed hay.
Okay. That, I can accept that explanation.
We haven't been spraying those areas. We've actually been going in with a disc every year to disc the land to keep the weeds down, because it's such a big area. We have not been spraying these areas.
Okay.
On the outsides, we do. We can't get in there with a disc.
Okay.
Further questions for the presenters? Seeing none? Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that. I'll ask now if there's anyone else here to speak in support of this land use bylaw amendment. Councillor Black, you're just going to do business arising? All right. I will ask a third time if there's anyone here to speak in support of this bylaw amendment. Seeing no one and knowing there's no one online, I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition of this bylaw amendment. If you're here to speak in opposition of the bylaw amendment C-1260-174, please come forward now. And recognizing no one online, I'll ask a third time if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to this bylaw amendment. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move to business arising. Recognize councillor Blackmore.
I'd move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1260-174, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
All right. So that motion is in order, and there's no discussion or debate on first reading. So I'll call the question. Please vote. That carries unanimously. Councillor Blackmore.
I would move a second reading for bylaw C-1260-174. And in speaking to this, I always feel that it's better to keep land in production than to let it just lay fallow and provide no economic good to the community as a whole. And while this will affect taxes within the community, it also provides a need to the agriculture community, and I really support it. It really bothers me when I see land sitting vacant, empty, and collecting garbage and collecting weeds. So I would ask council to support this.
As in councillor Bressi.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. As with past requests, I really struggle with this, because everything councillor Blackmore just said, I fully agree with. However, I disagree with the method we're using to accomplish this. I really think it makes sense to allow this land to be farmed. I think it's the best way to control weeds, and weeds are a big concern in that neighborhood. I think it's the most healthy for our residents, the most healthy for the environment way to control weeds, because it's a lot more natural than spraying a bunch of chemical on. Also, I just think it's aesthetically pleasing. And having, and as councillor Blackmore said, having land be productive instead of just sitting empty is very desirable to, desirable to me. So allowing for agricultural use to happen here, very much supported by me. However, I really struggle that the only way we're allowing developers to do this is by requiring a rezoning, and an inappropriate rezoning at that. Urban Reserve is meant to protect land intended for future urban development from premature subdivision development. That's what our land use bylaw says. We want this land to develop. We would love there to be a market so this land could be developing tomorrow. And when we require a developer to rezone in order to do agriculture, that means that we're asking them to spend time, we're asking them to spend money, we're asking them to take the risk of coming to council, doing public engagement to zone it to Urban Reserve. And then when they want to develop it, they have to spend that time, they have to spend that money, they have to undergo that risk yet again. Requiring rezonings for this kind of reason isn't development friendly. I also would highlight the risks that it brings. I think they're probably small risks, but they are, but the results will be significantly materialized. I get that this developer has intent in the future sometime to develop this land, but what if the market doesn't go forward in the future? What if we don't see significant growth in the future? What if this land gets passed on to another developer? And that developer, that future owner, would have the right to not continue farming this, but to build a solar collector, or to develop an extensive recreation property, or, yeah. I just think that this rezoning is the way to go about this. So I'm opposed. I hope the council won't approve this rezoning. But if it doesn't approve this rezoning, I hope that we'll take quick action to update our land use bylaws, to put agricultural use as a discretionary use in these types of lands, so that developers can just apply for a development permit to start doing this kind of agricultural use, rather than having to undergo rezoning. So I agree with the outcome we're trying to achieve, disagree with this way to get there.
Councillor Teason.
Oh, this is interesting. If I were to get in my time machine and take a look at things, because in the past, I was adamantly opposed to stuff like this. But for me, especially considering the concerns around fox tailing and everything else like that, I see this as a viable solution being proposed by the developer to address a problem, not only for them, but for us as a city as well. It's not just about chemical, but this land has laid foul too long, as councillor Blackmore stated. And for me, I see it as it's cleaning up a mess that it's going to need to get cleaned up. And I do agree with you, this is something that we should be addressing in our policies, and maybe it's something that we can, like, that's our job as governance, is to set the rules. Right now, our guys coming in here today are just asking to play by the rules that we already have set. And the way I see this is, is I'm fairly certain that this land will redevelop, and the sooner the better, actually. And with this rezoning change, that I'm not opposed to, or in the past I was, is I see this taking care of the weed issue as one thing, and helping our residents on the other sides of the fence that are adjacent to this property. At the same time, we're putting in a viable crop property, and there's nothing wrong with farmland. I've lived right close to that, I still do right now. And I love looking at the hay bales in it. As far as seeding, that can happen in September, October. That's typically when it happens, or in early spring. So if these guys are saying, hey, rezone it, and we're going to seed it, like, in the fall, you can bet I see them in a lot of different events. I'll be like, hey, is that reseeded yet? And I'll be nudging them. But again, it's their land. But I see this as a solution, rather than an issue to address. And I think down the line, we could probably do that, so we don't have to put everyone through the, I guess, the guinea pig, the hamster wheel, I guess is what I'm trying to say, of coming into council and trying to get the rezoning. So I am in support of this. Ironically, when I've been opposed to it every other time it's came to council.
Councillor Bosch?
Thank you. My question to, you know, changing the policies or the processes, that's one thing. But the question in regards to moving this forward today, does this grandfather the decisions of today to potentially new owners?
So, sorry, we've already had our opportunity for questions to administration, and now we're in the...
So we can't?
Right.
Okay. Well, this came up now, so...
Councillor O'Connor?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. One of the things, I am totally in favor of this development for the following reasons: weed control, making sure it's not looking unsightly. And I would urge councillor Bressi to look at a different opportunity, even though you might not like where the development is going at this time, and causes a rezoning. I think it's important to solve this issue now, and then we should have a meeting later on. So I'd really urge that you support this motion. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else in the queue, I will, for councillors Bosch's information, say that in regards to setting precedent, council has made previous decisions around similar conversations. And whether or not you think that sets precedent, I think that's a personal interpretation. So councillor Bressi, I'll go to you. You're in the queue, I see.
Yeah, thank you. It's not mine to close, because it's not my motion, but I just think that it's important to highlight that if we rezone this, if the land transfers, then the new owner inherits this zoning. Absolutely any rights that we confer right now get transferred to any new owners of this land. I think it's important to mention.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Councillor Blackmore to close.
Ah, yes. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Councillor Bressi has raised some really great points, and I... Counselor Bressi has raised some really great points, and I think that that is something that we need to address in the land use bylaw, maybe even tomorrow. But today, the people who are here before us have already spent their money and put their work into requesting this bylaw change, and it would seem quite unfair to me to send them away and say, yeah, we'll deal with it in a different format. So I would ask council to support these motions tonight and to give good consideration to moving forward with the land use bylaw change in the future that would accommodate these types of requests at a much more affordable and quick, more quickly paced platform.
All right, thanks for your close, Counselor Blackmore. I'll call the question. And that carries eight to one. Counselor Blackmore.
I would move that council have third reading, have third reading of bylaw 126174 at this meeting.
That motion is in order. In order for us to have third reading here tonight, it must pass unanimously. I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Blackmore.
I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C-126174 being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Perfect, thank you for that. Seeing no one in the queue, I will call a question on third reading of bylaw C-1260-174 being an amendment to the land use bylaw. And that carries eight to one. Counselor Bressi.
Great, if they may entertain me, I'd love to make a motion related to this.
Sure.
I'd move that council direct administration to bring to the appropriate standing committee potential land use bylaw amendments to allow agricultural, agriculture to be a discretionary use in vacant land awaiting development. And just speaks to this, I tried this at the last council, couldn't get traction on it, but I'll roll the dice, try it again. I really do, again, I, I voted no because I was against rezoning, no, because I'm against agricultural use. It makes sense that this is what we do with this land, and I think that there'd be two benefits to, to building this kind of change into the land use bylaw so it's easier to do. Number one, there's probably other properties out there where their owners could benefit from this type of use, and I think saving them the time, the money, the risk of having to go through rezoning twice is worthwhile. Also, there's, here's a few pieces of land, and they're not the only ones, that are now rezoned urban reserve so that they can use agricultural use. At some point, those developers will hopefully want to move them back to residential, back to residential zoning, but they might be rolling the dice a little bit on the market at that time. And I think that if they're rolling their dice of coming up to rezoning and going, well, if we rezone and the market doesn't materialize and we're going to have to rezone back to urban reserve again, then that's one disincentive to make the necessary rezoning so that we can see development here. So I think that if this becomes just a right that they have in different types of zonings, then we're more likely to see other developers take advantage of this opportunity and also developers that have already rezoned, rezoned to urban reserve to rezone back to residential use sooner than they might otherwise. So I hope that council will have some conversations about how can we make this an easier process in the future.
All right, questions from a discussion or debate, recognizing Counselor Blackmore.
Thank you, Counselor Bressi, for that motion. I think it's very timely, and I support it fully. One of the reasons I support it is if we change the land use bylaw, we can make it what we want it to look like. Currently, I don't know if we have any protection against the type of agriculture that would take place on such a piece of land, and I don't think any of us would be really crazy for intensive livestock operation, for example. So I, I think that it's, it puts us in better control of what happens, and I appreciate that.
Counselor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I also will support this motion. I do have a question, may I ask, if administration says this is the appropriate use to call it?
So I defer to Counselor, sorry, rather Chief Glavin, if he can, and if not, I know you have some of your colleagues here that can support you.
I think what we can do is, you know, with regard to the motion, I think there's some latitude there to bring back a series, potentially a series of recommendations on how we address the main point of the motion and then also mitigate some of the risks of UR.
Does that answer your question, Counselor?
Yep, thank you very much.
Just waiting for my eScribe to upload so I can read the motion. Is the motion in the eScribe? Perfect, thank you. All right, seeing no other discussion or debate, I'll call the question.
Bressi in favor?
And that carries unanimously. Seeing no other business arising, and there's no delegation business tonight, I will move to council member reports and start with Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I guess the biggest highlight, and I think a lot of us were probably there as well, was the Bear Creek Folk Festival for me. That was a great event. Other than that, I had a handful of meetings with constituents around herbal, naturalization, which I know a lot of us are dealing with, and a fair amount of calls in the last few weeks and meetings with folks around homelessness or Grand Prairie that are concerned as well. So mostly community calls in the last few weeks for me.
All right, thanks, Counselor Black. Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I took advantage of council breaks, I always do, to do a little bit of door knocking, not as much as I've done in other summers, but still to get out there and get my ear on the ground of what's going on, and it was, it was a positive experience, it was actually a pretty boring experience, which, in my experience, sometimes the best type of municipal government is government that residents aren't really thinking about very much. And so always appreciate getting out there and seeing people that are just kind of enjoying the community instead of, often we hear from the people that have concerns and are angry about things, so it's always refreshing to get out there and just get the random views on the street. I also got to attend the Canadian Association of Police Governance, along with Counselor O'Toole, Mayor Clayton, and our Police Commission Chair, Mr. Wong. And it was really interesting getting to learn from other police commissions from across the country about what's going well and what's not going well in their communities. And I know there was a lot of talk at the conference about what's the, about how to build a strong commission, but also about how to have a good relationship between council and the commission. And I really think that we're off to the right steps in our early relationship with this commission, but that's definitely a relationship council and commission that we need to keep top of mind and we need to really work on of make sure that council's involved, but appropriately so. I heard stories of commissions where their community got in trouble because council wasn't paying any attention to policing whatsoever, but also heard stories about communities got in trouble because council tried to act as a commission instead of staying hands off and arms-like like politicians should. And so really interesting conversations there that I look forward to being able to bring back to my work, not just here at the council table, but also the police commission table.
Thanks for that, Counselor Bressi. Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you, thank you very much. I did attend the Association of Boxing Commissions, and that's worldwide, and some of the stuff that's really taken a notice in the United States is slap hitting. If you've seen it on YouTube or whatever it happens to be, it's, most you're ever going to receive is six slaps. And if you go to some of the pro fights in boxing, there was one documented where the guy took 1,500 hits to the head. So it's, it's, it's probably going to happen. Same thing as bare knuckle fighting or bare knuckle boxing. But those are some of the topics that were discussed, and there were some amendments and bylaws changed in the commission. I also attended the police commission meeting that we regularly have once a month, and as, as Counselor Bressi said, I did attend the police commission conference and very, I wasn't too sure the first day because a lot of the stuff that they were talking about the first part of the day, we never had to dealt with, deal with it before. But the second, or the second and third day that was, I was there, it's all coming into place. So like I mentioned earlier, and Counselor Bressi said, interference with the commission and interference, interference by the council members was a big issue, and we're, we're new at this, so I'm just passing the story around. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to first congratulate the Street Performers Festival in July. They had numbers that were pre-COVID numbers, so great to see, roughly about 16,000 people coming to a free family event, so organizers and volunteers. And secondly, to the Bear Creek Folk Festival, their numbers increased to approximately 7,500 people a day going through, so happy to hear that for them. I could hear it from my house. It was good, but thank you to the organizers and to all the volunteers for both of those festivals. Looking forward to the Experience GP Festival coming, or night coming on September 1st. Also attended the GP Local Immigration Partnership, and with that, they're going to have a lot of their members and people who are on the, on the committee at the Experience GP event with, you know, fun activities and, and awareness pieces of, of the different multicultural people that we have here in Grand Prairie. They will put out a survey. It'll be from September 1st to 30th, and what impressed me was in 25 languages, this survey will be out, and it'll get the statistics on our current immigrants in our city. I think that's something that we haven't had a finger on solely. They also will have a welcome week, September 8th to 17th. That's a lot of free events to get to know again immigrants and committee members, as well as a college event. They are also assisting with the Rural Renewal Program, which has been a significant success for our city in bringing people to want to live here for, for a number of years. And then the International Day at the library in conjunction. So other than that, I was on holidays, and I hope everybody else had a good few weeks of holidays or sometime this summer to enjoy the weather. That's it.
Thanks for that, Counselor Bosch. Counselor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I had the honor of giving greetings as deputy mayor to the flag raising last Tuesday for the Grand Prairie Hindu Association as they celebrate India's 77th Independence Day, and I was joined by committee members that were in council and are in chambers along with administration, so that was a wonderful day and a great turnout for that. Also, the Bear Creek Folk Festival was just a wonderful event. I got out for two days. Thank you to the board that puts this on. It's not a small feat. The volunteers sponsor, and I know a lot of city staff and resources go into making sure that Borstadt Hill and Muscat CP Park are looking amazing, and, and thanks to all the neighbors in that area for putting up with a lot of traffic for a couple or three days. So that was something that was important to me. And really, this summer, I haven't had a break, but I am making appointments every week to get out and walk and explore our park system and a variety of different things, be it horse races at Evergreen Park, and I hear Dino Bressi is going to be running on Sunday, Red Willow Falls, Kleskin Hills, plus a number of things just around the city that I don't take advantage of enough historically because I'm neither too involved in, in business or in a computer or in a laptop or iPad, and so I'm just making self-appointments to actually get out and see the real world, but it's also a great opportunity just running into so many people and having great conversations and all kinds of feedback and input from our citizens. So that's been my primary role this summer.
Thanks, Counselor Berg. Counselor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I had a wonderful time on Vancouver Island and didn't appreciate the $2 a liter cost of gas, but I appreciate the gas we can get in, in this province for lower price. Folk Fest was a huge success on Friday and Saturday, except I got rained on. Then I got cold on Saturday night, and I had to miss Sunday because, hey, guess what? You got a cold. And then Champions Jim Ma council with Counselor Thiessen. It's always a joy to help our future leaders take part in what council is. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Counselor O'Connor. Counselor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I attended a ribbon cutting at Lux Petals, which is a new flower shop in the mall. I was excited to do that because it seemed for years that we had many great flower shops, and then suddenly we didn't have any. And so now we are, we're seeing a little bit of growth in that industry, and I think that's very exciting. From the ribbon cutting at Lux Petals, I rushed over to Muscat CP Park to kick off the walk for the IG Wealth Management Walk for Alzheimer's, which was very well attended. And they had an extraordinary band that kicked off their walk for them. Many members of the band were people with developmental disabilities, and they were just astonishing, played beautifully. With Counselor Berg, I attended the flag raising for the 77th anniversary of Independence for India. And again, the, the people from the Indian community in Grand Prairie who gathered here sang their anthem with such pride and, and such joy without any accompaniment. I'm always touched when people sing their own anthem. I think it makes it more special than simply listening to a recording. So for those who watch council, we actually do sing. You can't hear that online, but we do sing in council chambers. I attended a downtown association board meeting. I also attended a special board meeting of the Archives, South Peace Regional Archives, to approve the tender for the construction and redevelopment of Center 2000 downstairs, which is where they will be moving to. They, they, I guess I, because I'm on that board too, have put in an extraordinary amount of work to raise the funds that need to take place there to make that construction possible, and they haven't quite hit their target yet, but they are so close. I'm really proud of the work that they've done. And last but not least, three days at Bear Creek Festival. When it's this time of year in August, do not call me, do not write. I will be at the festival from dark day, from daylight to sunset every day. Maybe got a little bit sunburned, but you know, in the words of Granny Clampett, sunburned gypsy is a happy gypsy.
A question for you, Counselor Blackmore. Do you know approximately how much money is left to raise for the Archives, and when do they hope to be fully renovated and moved into their new space?
They have enough money to pay for the renovation itself. They are now looking for enough money to, to furnish it, and, and it's less than $100,000 that they're still looking for. And they have some ideas of where to come across gently used furniture that they may be able to use. But on that note, if there's any, if anyone knows of any business or industry out there who are trying to get rid of their sliding file, I don't know what they're called. Do you know what they're called, Mr. Miller? Sliding file system? We'll go with the technical term sliding file system. The Archives is one organization that could really, really use that type of filing system, and they would really appreciate a donation of such.
And when are they hoping to be completed?
Sometime in the spring. I'm not sure of the dates yet, sometime in the spring.
Thanks. All right, Counselor Thiessen.
Beautiful, yes, well, thank you very much. Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't at the last council meeting, but there was a couple of things I wanted to touch on. First off, the Street Performers Festival, which was incredible, amazing. I normally only get one day. I got two days. I decided to take an extra day before I took out of town on my, on my vacation, and yeah, the volunteers are great. Counselor Bosch, I know you're a big part of it there too now, so that was great as well. The performers were really fun, and they treated everyone so genuinely and kind, and I don't think I saw one crying kid. I didn't hear a crying kid, so that's a good thing. I also wanted to point out and give some props to Reading University. Rhonda and Linda Side do a tremendous service to this community. I had the honor of sitting with Counselor Bressi and his family as one of his children was graduating from Reading University. I won't mention his name because he, Counselor Bressi did not want me to yell out his name when he got his graduation paper, so I'll keep it discreet. But such a valuable program to encourage reading and new learners, and it's likely, Counselor O'Connor, that, you know, a few of those kids are going to sit in these chairs one day here too. So just such an incredible, an incredible journey for those children and for all the volunteers that, mostly teachers who take their summers off to teach, to help these kids get through so that they can not only improve. to help these kids get through so that they can not only improve their grades and their reading, but their learning experience altogether. So thank you so much for that. Also, the Bear Creek Folk Festival, I came back to that. That was a beautiful thing to come to. It's kind of like a reunion. I found myself talking more than I did enjoying most of the acts because there's so many people there that just you haven't seen in a month, you haven't seen in six months, you haven't seen in 10 years, and they just all come together. And it's such a wonderful event, similar to the Street Performers, it's got its own thing, but it really draws people back to our community. It really draws people into our community and spending money on the businesses, spending money at the festival, and just spending their time with people that they grew up with and in a community that maybe they don't even know about if they never were from here. And so get a lot of rave reviews about that. So big kudos to all the staff and volunteers at the Bear Creek Folk Festival and their sellout show. I also like to say a big thank you to all our staff because anytime we have a big event, I know we're touching on every department that's going out there and making sure things are good. Brian Glavine already got a thank you today for laying down like the felt over the dirt by the reservoir so that we didn't track up and destroy more turf. But that was very appreciated by the festival goer. So thank you to all of our staff for the contributions that they make above and beyond for that and the success of that. So now for a bit of humility. It's interesting because I spent the summer going from sacred site to sacred site to sacred site, different medicine wheels from Canada's Stonehenge in Sixtika, like Blackfoot Territory in Vulcan, to Mount Shasta, California, you know, to do a little bit of watershed stewardship down there too even. I didn't know I was going to do that, but I ended up doing some of that. But sometimes, you know, it's good to be humble and it's good to show a little bit of humility. And in our jobs, it's all about fast pace and talking, and especially when we get into those rounds of debates where we want to, you know, hit a home run and maybe have our side win that debate. And it was on the July 10th, 2023 council meeting that we were debating on whether or not we should give access to a group to city facilities. And in part of my debate, I started listing off all the great things that the city does and how we contribute to so many different events and organizations and loaning out our space. And I listed off a whole bunch of events. Now, one of the events I listed off that we just donated and gave, donated and gave us, bought to in one of our facilities was the Grand Gathering, which they actually rented this space. Now, I'm pretty sure I meant the powwow, but when you're in those types, sometimes your mouth just runs and you don't think before you talk. So for the people at the Friendship Centre, I know that you did rent it, and I have heard through the grapevine that, hey, we didn't give that to you. So I wanted to apologize for that bit of misinformation. I know myself, I pride myself in being as accurate as I can in portraying, you know, the things that we do as a city council. And the city of Grand Prairie especially wants to be able to put out the right and appropriate information all the time. So if I caused anybody hurt or if I offended anybody, I apologize for that. That definitely was not my intention. And of course, as the city of Grand Prairie and as a member of the city of Grand Prairie, we will always strive to be as accurate with our information as possible and to hear the concerns of everybody. And when we're wrong, we're not afraid to admit we're wrong. So thank you very much, Friendship Centre, for all that you do. And sorry if I misconstrued some of the truth out there. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Appreciate you retracting your, you know, error and recognizing that you are right. Sometimes in discussions, things are said and not intended to be hurtful, especially in our relationships as this council has prioritized our indigenous relationship with the Treaty Territory as well as all First Nations and Aboriginals. So there was no intent or ill will there, and I appreciate you making that apology. Now, I don't really have a lot more to add. Most of it's been identified. A couple of things that I did. First, I wanted to thank Counselor Blackmore as well as Counselor Berg. When it's your time to be deputy, the workload sometimes is significant. So I appreciate you picking up things that I was unable to attend. I also wanted to indicate that I attended a Community Rail Advocacy Alliance executive meeting. Tomorrow, we have meetings in town with 18 mayors and organizations as part of the group with CN executives to talk about rail service disparity in our region and in our province. I also had an opportunity to meet with Minister Dan Williams, Minister Nixon, and Minister Turtin. With that, we toured the Coordinated Care Campus, which was an opportunity for them to see the province, to see the great work that our municipality is doing in preparation in that facility. We also had a meeting with Grand Spirit Foundation and our regional municipal partners, which was a very good discussion. I also, last week, while I was away attending the Canadian Police Governance Conference, which, as noted, was an excellent conference, a great opportunity for me to really hear from people who had been in that type of police governance for a while, to hear where there's opportunities for us to be successful. It was a very good conversation. I learned a lot. In order for us as a council to set up that commission to be successful, some takeaways. I made a lot of notes and I look forward to our chief starting on August 28th in regards to some initiatives that will be, in my opinion, a great way for the commission to be successful. What I was getting at though, I had a call last week with Minister Maciver and Minister Nixon to identify from the province supports that we may need as a municipality who is really taking care of people in a time of need who have been evacuated from their homes as a result of fire. On that call was also Mayor Gondak and Mayor Sohi. We talked about the after effects of crisis when you're a host community. I do want to shout out to our organization as well as GPREP. I know that many members of our team have spent significant time over the last five, six days. And it's so recent that we had dealt with a fire in our own jurisdiction. It's demanding and stressful and tiring. And so I appreciate all the work that our team has put into that to support those in this time of need. I also appreciate the province reaching out and intend to have further conversations with them around how they can support us as we support our colleagues in Northwest Territories. I wanted to lastly mention, I had a conversation with Health and Sciences Association of Alberta, who had picked up on the initiatives that we had in regards to healthcare and healthcare professionals and our attraction and our intent to recruit and retain more people. They too, as an association, are looking obviously for more members, but they wanted to talk about potential collaboration with municipalities that are looking to attract more people to the region. So it was an interesting, unusual conversation, but I was appreciative that they had been following the work that we're doing and that they reached out. With that, I wanted to say quickly, thank you to the wonderful volunteers of the Grand Prairie Street Festival as well as Bear Creek Folk Fest. Our community continues to present and offer recreation and sport and culture. And we shoot way above our weight in the offerings that we present to our region and to people to come to experience our community. Those tasks don't go without a lot of volunteer and corporate support and sponsors and even our own organization lending a hand. So thank you to everyone who participated in that. Thank you to the volunteers. Thank you to the sponsors and the donors. And thank you for the people who came to Grand Prairie to enjoy our events. And with that, I'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.